We usually do start on time, or approximately there. Okay, with, uh, we called the meeting to order. Again, we are sorry for starting so late. We'll try and move things right along. Dr. Kelly, why don't you jump right in? Oh, hold on here. I think I probably need to do a couple of things. Hold on. Thank you. So, first things first. We motion to accept the recent election results.
Motion. Second.
All in favor? Aye. I didn't even get to make a comment. I just want to congratulate the three board trustees that were reelected, particularly Mr. Lennon, who garnered well over 700 votes. I think it was a real vote of confidence from the community. But thank you all for showing up, and particularly for approving the budget with overwhelming positive yes, and the referendum for the new construction project. Thank you very much. Now I think we can move to motion to accept the reorg meeting in July. Thank you, Connie. July 8, 6:00 P.M. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
All in favor? Aye. One more before going to Rachel. We need to motion accept the draft minutes from last month.
Motion.
For three meetings, may I?
Goodness gracious, I am really messing up this evening. What would I do without Connie? Our district clerk, by the way, Connie Lawrence Ados, where would I be? Where would we be without her? Motion to accept the draft minutes of the three meetings.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Third time's a charm. Dr. Kelly, take it away.
Thank you. Just a few quick highlights. Good evening, everybody. Happy June. I want to start off, pardon me. The Bronxville School's been awarded and has been designated a Green Ribbon School. The application was extensive and broken down into three pillars. Pillar one speaks to reducing waste, recycling programs, and conserving. That's quite all right. That's Connie, our district clerk.
I got it.
And conserving water and energy. Pillar two speaks to the health and wellness of our students and staff through school gardens, fresh produce, and student lunches, and improving air quality through new technology. And pillar three speaks to environmental and sustainability education, which is evident through our STEM projects and strong civic and economic skills of our students. I commend this district's dedication to submitting this extensive application, and I want to thank two parents specifically, Laura Van Teehoven and Maria Tarjenian, as well as our Director of Facilities, Mike Lee, and our Middle School Science Curriculum Leader, Jen Zopp, who are all instrumental in this, in this application, all under the leadership of Ann Meyer, who took on this tremendous feat of writing that application. So today was the ceremony in Albany during the Board of Regents meeting, and I recorded a clip of Regent Fran Willis granting us this honor.
So now, the first tool is talking. So I'm going to begin talking background from the first human district to the this evening. The 2025 New York State Green Ribbon District designation is Bronxville Union Free School District. And we have here today, and maybe you can stand, Ann Meyer, assistant secretary of working on instruction, Jennifer Zoll, middle school science teacher, and Van Teehoven parent. And it's wonderful to have you here, and I'm going to read a little bit first about the program as, as you stand, because this is a great honor for all of us in the state and for you. Bronxville Union Free School District is a strong example of how educational leaders can integrate conservation, community engagement, environmental sustainability into both daily operations and work. Bronxville has taken several steps toward environmental sustainability through completing my standard recommended energy audit improvements and maintaining focus on energy efficiency with a building energy management system. Bronxville has implemented water conservation measures such as rain sensor equipment irrigation system for the front lawn and water bottle refilling stations throughout the building, including at the football field. The district encourages a healthy lifestyle through counting as a bonus policy, promoting nutritious meals, physical activity, and nutrition education. Bronxville emphasizes environmental education through composting programs, chemical management initiatives, and partnerships with organizations like the Green Learn Nature Center. The district has an outdoor classroom and a learning garden that is used for project-based learning experiences across grades and disciplines. Bronxville also implemented environmental stewardship and sustainability throughout the curriculum by using the Bronx River as a living laboratory. Students in all grades, K through 12, participate in hands-on river studies that focus on water quality ecosystems and the impact of human activity in the environment. Through their experiences at Bronxville, students gain the skills they need to become responsible citizens, protect the environment, and make positive impacts on the world around them. Please join me in congratulating Bronxville Union Free School District for their extraordinary efforts in sustainability. And I want to mention you superintendent, Dr. Rachel Kelly. I know she's been a student of this process as well. I know you also went through an environmental issue when you had, I believe, a storm. I remember when that happened, and it was flooding in the school. And it was just one school in Bronxville. And I know what it took to get that school back. And, and part of that, I'm sure, was this whole environmental thinking. So I congratulate you, and I'd like all of us to take a moment to congratulate Bronxville.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Ann Meyer was kind enough to bring back the signed certificate naming us as a Green Ribbon School for the 2025 school year. So thank you, everybody. I also want to congratulate all of our students who have performed in our end-of-year concerts in elementary, middle, and high schools, as well as our student athletes who have had a wonderful season, many of whom have played in postseason competition. The depth of our students' talent, whether performing in the auditorium or out on the fields, is quite extraordinary. Congratulations to all. And before I end my remarks and hand it over to our Student Ex officio board member, I want to take a moment and thank the community, specifically the Board of Education, the PTA, the foundation, the mayor, Mary Marvin, and the chief of police, Chris Satrielli, for hosting what I thought was a perfect evening on our front lawn, honoring my 30 years of service to this incredible school district. It's the students, the faculty, the staff, the parents, and the broader community that make this place so special. Thank you for taking the time to acknowledge what I love doing.
Thank you, Rachel.
Yes, thank you.
Louise.
Hi, everyone. I have a few updates from the past month in the high school and just in the school in general. So AP exams were May 5th to 16th, and sophomores through seniors who took AP classes participated in these. And on May 16th, to end out the two weeks, we had junior and senior prom. There was a prominade before, and this whole event was planned by the junior class government, and I thought it was very fun. SFL Field Day was May 19th, and there were many different lawn games for all the students to participate in. There was a dunk tank that Dr. LaVerse actually went in. And there also were food trucks provided, which, it was really good. And on May 19th was the Arts Festival hosted by the Arts Society and PTA. And in that event, there was an open mic night for high school students as well as an art show. The week of May 19th was Senior Week. Seniors went on a field trip to Boundless Adventure. They learned about different safety procedures as they're heading into college. And there was also a guest speaker, Hoda Kotb. Senior shadowing began on May 27th for seniors, and different seniors got either a job or an internship to fill their hours. Clubs have been choosing their leadership for next year, and different clubs such as the SFL and Athletic Council held elections for those positions. The last day of classes is tomorrow, and the Spring Varsity Awards are also tomorrow for sports. On Wednesday, we have the all-school award ceremony where different high school students can receive recognition for things they've done throughout the year. Finals are June 12th to 25th. Baccalaureate is Friday, June 13th, and graduation is Saturday, June 14th. And that's everything. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Louise.
And as the community is aware, we are dedicated to bringing the Bronxville Promise to life. And at our public meetings, having students represent what the Bronxville Promise has meant to them in the specific areas. And this evening, we've asked some students to join us to speak specifically about their independent studies and how that probably taps most into critical thinking. So come on up. And Dr. LaVerse is going to introduce everyone. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. You're in for a treat tonight. So Dr. Kelly and Mr. Brandon is members of the Board of Education. We're very pleased to present a showcase of some of the work that took place at our Research and Independent, Independence Study Symposium. This was on May 30th. The projects you're going to see this evening really illustrate a lot of the tenants of the Bronxville Promise focusing on critical thinking. They showcased a lot of innovation, and they demonstrate how students are interested in the work that they can use to make a difference in society and in people's lives. It also shows their terrific capacity for collaboration and supporting one another. So this year, we had about 73 different independent studies, ranging from genetic engineering to the intersections between literature, music, and art throughout history. Each year, our students have the opportunity to propose a topic they'd like to perform an independent study on, and they identify a faculty advisor. They create a full proposal outlining their course of study. These proposals are reviewed for their specificity and the scope and sequence of their study, the rigor, the assessment methods, and what the final project will be and the periodic assessments. And one thing worth noting is that the more specialized and specific students get regarding their interests, the less likely their study covers just one discipline. In fact, many of the projects you'll see this evening required students to take an interdisciplinary approach. So without any further delay, I want to introduce Mr. Cavari, who coordinated our symposium this year, and I hope that you enjoy seeing our students work in action.
I think, thank you. Hi, everyone. So for the last couple of years, I think last year was the first year that we really formally did this, but we did this again this year, and it was much larger as an event. We've been doing research symposiums, and this was on May 30th. The idea was to have students present the work that they've done independently at the Bronxville School in a session that was multidisciplinary and that involved a lot of people from the community. So this year, we had about 40, 45 Bronx River research studies, 15 or so independent studies, and we also invited AP literature projects and education equity projects. So one of the goals was to make this multidisciplinary and sort of collaborate across disciplines. And what we did was we actually did a virtual-esque poster session where we set up posters on TVs, and students would stand in front of their work on the TV at an assigned location for about 15 minutes, and they would talk. The idea was for it to be interactive, as if it were at a research conference. They would talk to people about their work. And so it was usually a few-minute presentation and then more of a Q and A. And we had a lot of people participate. We had a few middle school classes come. We had teachers, K to 12, administrators, K to 12, and even some community members, including parents and some of our own Bronx River Research Advisory Committee, all come to the meeting. And I think kids got great feedback, and if nothing else, it was excellent practice for them to communicate science. Like Dr. LaVerse said, research is cross-disciplinary. And I think we want to expand our symposium and keep doing this year after year to make it clear that research is collaborative in nature, and it's collaborative across subjects and even disciplines. And so without further ado, I really want to give our students, we have four students here today, some time to talk about some of the work they've done. These projects range from independent studies that were done post Bronx River research to things that are completely separate. We have a math project. We have some people looking into CRISPR. So I'll turn it over to Charlotte, who's the first student up.
Good evening, everyone. I am Charlotte Limbu, and my independent study was based off of my work in Bronx River research. My entire project was aimed to assess the health of the fish within the Bronx River. I spent about 16 weeks going to the Bronx River almost every single day and fishing, which is one of my favorite activities to do. And the fact that it could be for research was really incredible. I collected data on all of the species, any biological conditions, parasites, and I found out some really interesting things. So as you know, the Bronx River has historically been a very polluted river, and there have been many conservation efforts. And these conservation efforts have clearly helped the river from the data that I collected. All of the fish that I caught were within normal range. They were healthy for the most part. There were parasites, but they minimally affected the fish. They caused human health effects, but not health effects to the fish, which is good. There was even pregnant fish caught. There was about five different species caught, even smallmouth and largemouth bass, which are bioindicators. They can't live in very polluted waters, and small proportions of each fish caught had parasites. The opportunity, this research has given me great opportunity in life. I have been able to do something I love, which is fishing, and make it research, which has been incredible and made me so happy. I had the opportunity to present at WSEF, which is right in the middle. This is a research competition where I was able to present my research to real scientists and get their true opinion on what my research was about and how I can improve it. And I even got the opportunity to tour some labs and things like that through a summer program I did where I talked heavily about my research. It has been a really incredible experience doing independent studies, and it has really helped me grow as an individual and made me realize that I do want to continue this in the future. So next year, when I'm off in Miami in the fall, I will be majoring in marine biology and continuing my love for the ocean. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emma Young, and I'm a junior at Bronxville High School. So my independent study was based on science research, specifically in FreeSofu. So my independent study was with Miss Dowd, but I also worked with lab mentors outside of the school that helped guide my work. But Miss Dowd was instrumental in helping me better understand the context of FreeSofu in the scope of neuroscience, which is like the broader field this tool is in. So to explain what FreeSofu is as a tool, it's basically a software suite for automatic analysis and segmentation of neuroimaging data. So what does that mean? Basically means you have brain data, and you have an input image that you got from taking an MRI scan, for example. But you want to sort it so that you have its function based on different parts of the brain, because otherwise you're just looking at a bunch of pixels. What FreeSofu can do is take in brain data in vast amounts, way more than a human could do, and segment it automatically and accurately, unlike any program that happened before. This is really important, because this sorting process allows researchers to process brain data a lot more easily and make really interesting findings about large amounts of data at once. As a result, FreeSofu's algorithms are both more accurate and also more widely used than prior methods. It's used in many research pipelines, such as the Human Connectome Project and the UK Biobank, because it's needed to crunch such large amounts of information. So what was my role in this, then? My role as a research intern was to work under the LCN, or the Laboratories for Computational Neuroimaging. What the LCN does is it's basically a collection of labs that are centered around improving the algorithms that FreeSofu already has and creating new algorithms that help sort this data in new and progressive ways. It's a lab at the Motino Center for Biomedical Imaging, which is associated with Massachusetts General Hospital, MGH, and HST, which is the Harvard MIT Health Sciences and Technology, which is all based in Boston. What I did as an intern was I created manual vessel annotations. So what I was doing was basically doing manually what this software does automatically. Like any algorithm, it needs training data to base off of, and I was someone who helped create that training data to help improve the algorithms in the future. Overall, this independent study for me was a great opportunity to explore a lot of different interests that I had. I think Mr. Cavari mentioned this really well earlier. But it's very interdisciplinary as a pursuit to study frontiers in neuroimaging, because it combines things like computer science and machine learning, and also like biology and anatomy. And you need to be able to understand and synthesize all of these things to better understand where these frontiers can take us in the future. So overall, this experience working with a real lab and being able to get hands-on with such a big frontier in neuroimaging was something that really heightened my respect and my love for all of these different disciplines. And I was very thankful to be able to do this with both mentors outside and within the Bronxville School. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Isabel Young, and my independent study was completed under the mentorship of Mr. Cavari and two professional statisticians. And my project used biostatistical methods to investigate surgical outcomes in pediatric surgical patients. So in my project, I compared outcomes between patients with cerebral palsy diagnosis and patients without a cerebral palsy diagnosis. And I was able to use data from a national surgical dataset containing real-world clinical data from real patients who had undergone surgeries in the past. Throughout this project, I learned how to design a study to minimize bias using a variety of statistical techniques. One statistical technique that I used was propensity score matching, which aims to mimic a randomized trial and create patient groups that are more easily comparable. So how my mentors described it was initially, when I received the data, it was more an apples-to-oranges comparison between patients with CP and without CP, as there were a lot of confounding factors, from demographics such as age or race to other comorbidities such as other diagnoses that they had, that made the groups very hard to compare and really hard to identify was CP really the thing that made them different or made them have separate outcomes. But using propensity score matching, I reduced this bias by matching based on these confounding factors. And in this project, I learned the importance of reducing this bias in making more ethical decisions. I also learned how to perform logistic regression, which is a more, I would say, traditional method used in a lot of science research, especially in medicine. And I use it to assess the impact of different baseline patient characteristics on certain outcomes. And one of these outcomes that I found important was unplanned hospital readmission. So overall, throughout this project, I developed a proficiency in both statistical methods and how to perform these methods. And I performed a lot of my statistical computations in the coding software, O Studio, which I previously had no experience with. And it was really interesting to learn what goes on behind the scenes in doing these statistical processes and better ways to apply this in my research. Overall, I think my project was especially interdisciplinary, as, which is definitely a trend we can see throughout a lot of these projects, because it really taught me about the intersection between data science and medicine, as well as resource design and ethics in helping patients in the future. And overall, I'm really grateful for this opportunity to explore my interest in biostatistics throughout the school year. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Larissa Coker, and I'm currently a junior at Bronxville High School. I'm so honored to have this opportunity to speak with you tonight. This year, I participated in an independent study on CRISPR gene editing technology along with Marsha Lakovic and Kara Kachansky. Our advisor, Mr. Cavari, created an open and supportive space where we learned through podcasts, scientific articles, case studies, and group discussions. He really encouraged us to ask tough questions, think outside of the box, and connect this new science to the real world. My personal focus was on CRISPR in neurological disorders, specifically Parkinson's, Alzheimer's, and ALS. I learned that CRISPR uses a guide RNA and an enzyme called Cas9 to act like molecular scissors, cutting faulty DNA at a specific location. It's exciting because of the potential to treat diseases that until now have had no cure, but it comes with serious challenges. For example, there's the risk of off-target effects, editing the wrong gene, and ethical concerns like how this technology might only be accessible to wealthier communities, or what it means to change something in the brain we don't fully understand. Just last week, we presented our final projects at the Bronxville Science Symposium, where we shared what we learned with high school students, teachers, and multiple middle school classes. It was really exciting to see younger students so curious and full of questions, and it reminded me why this research matters beyond just textbooks. Even though my main interest is in endocrinology and reproductive health, which is the field I hope to work in someday, this independent study opened my eyes to how gene editing connects with many areas of medicine. It helped me realize how much I also care about neurology. Because of that, next year, I plan to do my third independent study on neurological disorders and how they can affect prenatal development, a project that brings both of my interests together. Thank you again for the chance to speak. My research this year has been so rewarding.
Hello, I'm Isabel again. And in addition to my independent study on biostatistics, I also completed an independent study in real analysis along with my sister, Emma. What real analysis is, is that it's a branch of math that focuses on a more rigorous proof-based foundation for calculus. It focuses on why computations learned in calculus work on a more deep level. My study centered around the real number system, how sequences and series behave, and how functions of real numbers work. One new challenge posed by real analysis was set notation, which uses different symbols to represent sets, their elements, and operations performed on them. And you can see it on the screen under the definition of a limit, where I provided the definition of a limit in set notation. I think the biggest change for me in this study was learning how to write a mathematical proof, which is something I had very little experience with before. I had to learn how to write precise definitions, build arguments in a step-by-step manner, and learn how to analyze the logical structure of mathematical claims. To add on what Izzy said, overall, real analysis was really a deconstruction of the past work we've done studying mathematics. We learned about not only the tools that we use, but also how to deconstruct them and then reconstruct them from scratch, which really helped me appreciate and understand the tools that I previously learned better. An anecdote that felt very relevant to me was about the life of Carl Wildstrauß, who is considered the father of modern real analysis. He was a German mathematician born in 1815, and he made many contributions to the field of mathematical analysis, including pioneering the Bolzano-Wildstrauß theorem, which is one of the more foundational theorems of the course. One of his most famous quotes is, "A mathematician who is not also something of a poet will never be a complete mathematician." As someone who is a writer myself and has always been, it really resonated with me and really helped me appreciate what real analysis has meant to so many people and so many students, including myself. It's really opened my eyes to how creative math can be and how much it does interface with all of the other studies I've been doing, even in humanities courses and even outside of school. Being able to study real analysis has been able to enhance my love for mathematics as a subject, and I'm very thankful that I was able to do that with the Bronxville School. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. It's a shame we don't have mics, because I would let them drop them. Pretty good. If you have any questions, I'm happy not to attempt to answer them. This is some very advanced work that I'm sure the students would love an opportunity to try to do.
I'll, I'll, guys, that was really impressive. Thank you. Charlotte is my neighbor, so I'll pick on you for a second if you don't mind. About 30 years ago, there was a rope swing over the Bronx River, and I was the unlucky one that took the swing and the branch broke. And I landed it, and I can still remember the taste. It was not, it was not fresh. What do you think has been the biggest contributor to cleaning up the Bronx River over the last, you know, couple of decades? And what can we continue to do to keep that going?
Honestly, I think one of the biggest contributors has been Bronx River research, in total and complete honesty. We just did a two-day Bronx River cleanup last week. And in that, we pulled out some of the most impressive haul I've ever seen in a long time. We pulled out two shopping carts. We pulled out two shopping carts, about five or six tires.
More than that, it was like 10-plus tires.
Yeah, 10-plus tires.
They were like huge tires.
Yeah. We pulled out really crazy things out of that river that are really trying to help clean it up, to the point where day one, we looked at our pile of trash and we go, is there anything else to clean up in here? And we had to find different sections of the river that no one has been to because we just haven't had access to it yet to clean it up. So Bronx River Research honestly is a great contributor, and that two-day cleanup where we take all the middle school classes and some of the other classes we have down to the river is really incredible. But honestly, throwing your trash away in a trash can and not discarding it, not littering anywhere within Bronxville, because all of it goes directly into the river. So things like that, not using as intense fertilizers, things like that are really helpful to keeping the river clean.
Thank you.
You said you caught a large mouth and a small-mouth bass, which indicate that the water's clean. Do you know the last time that, how long that trend has been? How many years you've been able to catch that versus when the river was really polluted? When's the first time that you've been able to catch bass again?
I'm not sure quite the trend, but I do know that when I first started catching bass two years ago, or last year, last year, it wasn't as, it was nowhere near the population now. And now we even have eels, which I couldn't find the first year that I did research. So that's a really good indicator, but I cannot tell a specific time when you could start catching bass in the river.
Thank you.
Great job, everybody.
Great. Excellent job, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much, everybody. I'm now pleased to introduce Mr. Brad Ashley, our Director of Technology. He has been spending a tremendous amount of time this year on working on improving our website. And he has solicited some feedback from the community, from the board, from faculty. And as a result, I asked him to give us a little bit of a tease of what some of these improvements may look like prior to us launching the improved website. And certainly after we launch it, the community, everyone will have ample opportunity to give feedback. But I thought we could get a little teaser this evening, so thanks, Brad.
All right, great. Really tough to follow that, but I'll try my best. Probably should have gone first.
Sorry about that.
All right, so website resign. So we started this project over a year ago, kind of looking at, we had some, a company come in called Final Site, and they did some focus groups with people from the community. They did community members, parents, they did teachers, they did students, they did administration. And they kind of asked about the current website and how we felt about it. They came back with a lot of, you can go to the top, please. Yep. And then, so they were kind of working, trying to find out what's not working, what is working, and they have their kind of system in place. So I was really along for the ride. I was fortunate to have some really strong people helping me out through Final Site. They're not watching, but shout out to them. So what we've got here is, the very first thing we had to do was kind of analyze who was visiting our website and how often it was. And so across the entire year, it's about 200 visits per day, and that varies based on the time of year. So we were kind of looking at, all right, where are people going? And we're able to, through Google Analytics, look at which pages were being visited. And we were also able to look at pie charts of what kind of devices were visiting our website. And what we've noticed over the past two years, there's been a trend of more mobile visits through our, to our website. So these are all things that we were kind of taking in as we were thinking about, all right, designing which pages are most important, what devices are people looking at. So all of this kind of goes into creating the website. So if you could go to the next slide. So this is a preview of our homepage. We have changed the navigation, and I'll go through that on the next slide, but I just want to keep this up right now. We have a much larger, what they call hero image, and we have the ability to put much more text than in previous years, or in our current site. So just some of the little changes. I'm not going to be able to go through all of them, but I want to highlight some of the things that really kind of draw it out. At one point, one of our Final Site mentors or people that were helping me out, they had a really great idea to weave in pictures with the Bronxville Promise, but we couldn't because we didn't have the amount of text ability. So it was like, one of these things that was just like, the limitations of our current site, which we're still on, moving to a more updated site gives us the possibility to do some of these text-based things. So this is the brand-new landing page, and if you go to the next slide, please, thank you. We have a reorganized navigation. This PDF is also available on the Board Docs website, so people can see better pictures. Again, websites aren't meant to be seen on a 65-inch TV at the end of a hallway. It's supposed to be on your device, so everybody can kind of take a look at that. On the very top of the main page, we have Parents Calendar, Class Link, and then Infinite Campus. Those were the main pages that people said that they would like to visit, and those were also the most website hits, looking at our analytics. And then, under Parents, we have a Parent Zone, we have Athletics, Lunch, and Attendance. And again, these were all things that when they surveyed the community, these were the main points that people wanted to get to. What does my kid eat? How do I take attendance? How do I get to the athletics? And then the Parent Zone is kind of a nice catch-all that we didn't have before. As you can see, on the far right-hand side, next to Menu, there's the three lines. It is called a hamburger menu. I'm not making that up, but when you click on the hamburger menu, it opens up, and you can see we have this nice kind of navigation of simple things. You click on the plus, and it kind of expands out. There's two different ones. There's the main tech district page, and then one of the schools. And then if you go down to the very bottom, you can see Athletics. And Athletics, really, we tried to just say, okay, weekly schedule, one is my kid have practice, games, one of those games, and then the live stream to be able to watch. So just some reorganized navigation, trying to make it simple and easier. All right, next slide, please. Perfect, thank you. So we also updated the Bronxville Promise page, being kind of our North Star. So what we did is we attempted to take the newer language that was developed back in October and kind of put it into tabs along the bottom, and so it really kind of outlines what the promise is. The main tenants are the tabs, and then you can go through. And what we're going to try and do is attempt to find ways to, we don't have staff photographer, but we're going to enlist a lot of people to try and take more pictures so that we can have it more idealized on the different tenants of the Bronxville Promise. All right, speaking of photos, we have an updated staff directory. This was a big ask of seeing who is my teacher and what does their face look like? So we've got our staff directory. This was a big project, kind of uploading everything on the backend, and I'll show you that on the CMS in a few slides. But then finding most recent yearbook photos to put. There's some people that we had to chase down to get a newer yearbook photo, and we couldn't get them all, but we got a majority comfortable enough to put out there. And what's really nice about this is that we're able to, since this isn't in a single page, it's built into the CMS itself. So now we're able to, on the first-grade site, target the first-grade team. On the middle-school English site, we're able to target the middle-school English teachers. And so each site is going to be more directed and going to have everybody's picture, so you know exactly what your, who the teachers are of each subject. All right, thank you, next one. Curriculum apps, this was another big ask. We have these wonderful PDFs that are year-long, and they're just kind of static on the page. You can click on them, you can look through them, but we had a few asks from the community of trying to figure out, make it more dynamic and interactive. This was actually an interesting problem, because it was, we didn't have a great solution immediately. And so really what we wanted was, we wanted three filters. And so we kind of came to an ability to do two filters and a search bar. So hopefully, we're getting there. We're also looking into employing some AI to be able to upload all of the curriculum apps and that be able to search. So that's doing a little tweaking. That is not for our launch. That's probably more of a fall thing, just putting it out there. But the curriculum is put up there. You can see, this is just an example of K through A curriculum, the tabs, and then you can filter by month, and you can filter by subject. And then when you click on one of them, next slide, when you would click on one of them, it would pop out and give you a pop-up window showing exactly what they're doing and some information on that. This also has the ability to have hyperlinks. So if there's a textbook linked to it, you can click on the link, and it will take you to the textbook if available. Next slide, thank you. We also have, we also reorganized our calendars. So we really leaned into the calendar module, and we're able to find and update as many calendars as possible and link them. And so what that means is that now all of our calendars are Google Calendars, in which many people in each building in the district have access to. So people can update those when there's a change, when this, when Field Day is delayed until the next day because of weather. You can update that, and it will automatically update to the calendars. All of them have the ability to be subscribed to, so anybody could go on, they can subscribe to it, and you'll get it as a Google Calendar or an iCal on your phone, if you're familiar. We also have a couple different layouts of all school events at the top, and so a nice way to kind of read that, that cycles through in a carousel. And then below, we have the multiple tabs that have all that. The athletics, which I didn't go into, our Final Site people were able to grab each individual sports athletics calendar and be able to put that into the website and then be able to filter that out. And then we were just informed that they're moving to a new platform. So when we get ahead of that new platform, when we get access to it, we'll go ahead and do the same so that all the calendars are up there. And again, all of these calendars are linked, and so when the athletics calendar is updated by Bosse, who's in charge of our game schedule, when the middle school, the high school, the elementary school, when those calendars are updated, it will take about five minutes to push the regular, to the public site. And then, and one big thing, one big challenge was ADA compliance. And so our website is now eight years old, and so think back on eight years ago, what kind of technology was out there? And now, we have much more advanced technology, and we have a lot more rules in terms of ADA, so the accessibility aspect. So we have an AudioEye, which is a little icon with the person. If you click on that, I don't know if anybody's played around this on different websites, but when you click on that, it gives you a bunch of accessibility options. That's the menu on the far-right-hand side. It can change the text, the size of the text, the, there's a dyslexic font out there, so if you're dyslexic, you can click on that, you can show that, and it will bring up a font. It has screen readers that will blackout all but a single line, so you can really focus. But the problem with all of that is that it doesn't work well if your website isn't organized. So we went through a big organization project, making sure that every page kind of has the same headers, the same SEO, so the same search engine optimization to be able to find these different places. And then, of course, a little over a year ago, they announced that everything's going to be built towards mobile. And so fortunately, when we're updating to this newer site, everything's going to be automatically built in. And then our final slide, yes, final slide, is our content management system. It's updated. So CMS is content management system, and this is on the backend. I wasn't going to go through a GIF and show you all the ins and outs, but just wanted to point out, and it's very small to see, but on the far-right-hand side, it shows you all the updates that it's constantly going through. And so this is Final Site, somebody else, the product that we use, keeping up to date and making sure they were ADA compliant and making sure all those things. So we have assistance in that as we kind of move forward and continue to improve our website. So this website, we hope for a launch on ironically, Reorganization Day, so on Tuesday, July 8th. So I'll be working on that in the first couple days of July. And as Dr. Kelly mentioned, when it goes live, there'll be a pop-up window, there'll be a form that we can fill out with all the great things and the things that you might want to tweak, just keep it in that order. And you can give us feedback, and as we're soliciting feedback from the community, we'll go ahead and implement it as it seems appropriate. Any questions?
It's great, Brad. I'm putting you up there with our genius students.
I did use the word trend, so try to get a little science in there, computer science.
Really appreciate all the very thoughtful and hard work on it. And July sounds great. And did you say the curriculum page would, you think that might be ready in the fall?
So the curriculum page will be ready on the launch, the AI component. And I don't know if that's going to be ready, because Final Site is working on their own AI component. I'm trying to work on another bot in which we're able to upload all of those curriculum apps and be able to search. So the reason for that, and maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, because if this doesn't happen, this is now on YouTube Live. But what I'm trying to do is get it so that we can upload all of the things, and I can, and a user can go in and say, I have a fourth grader and an eighth grader. What are they doing in September? You can't do that on the site, because there's no way to match up all that curriculum, but an AI bot could. And so a chatbot could, because it could search those different things, pull that information, and put it together. So that's what I've been working on. I can't promise that that's going to be ready in July, but I'm going to work on that for September, because I think that would be a great tool.
And even if you're, like, your child's out sick, great, here's the lesson from the, at some point in the future, here's the lesson from the day, this is what you missed.
Right. I mean, most of that's going to be on Google Classroom from the teacher directly. The website, curriculum apps are more of like a general overview, but absolutely, if they're missing a week, then we're going to be able to see what they've missed over that weekend.
Well done, Brad.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So there's quite a long personnel agenda before the board this evening. We were able to discuss all aspects of this in executive session. I do want to point out just a couple of the items, A through double I. And first and foremost, that is the appointment of our interim elementary school principal. So Adrian Leitman is coming home. She was a master teacher here in fourth and fifth grade, and I truly believe, and this is anecdotal, I should do another dissertation on this, but I believe that the best administrators were our best teachers. I think master teachers make just exquisite administrators. And we did promote Adrian to assistant principal, and she served in that role for six, seven years before she retired. And then in retirement, she went over to the dark side and went to independent school administration and has decided that she's had enough of that, so we were able to scoop her up precisely when we needed her. So I appreciate the board considering your appointment this coming year. Also before you are a number of new hires due to resignations and retirements. This is also the agenda where I ask you to consider the salaries of the administrators as well as the salaries of our managerial and confidential staff. It's also the agenda where you have all of our part-time teachers, because they are appointed annually, as well as some of our summer help, which are students who help with our technology help desk. And then we do have our special education summer program, employees that I'm asking you to consider, as well as a few new coaches for the fall. And I wanted to just end on a note that we have a teacher who was in need of sick time to get her through the remainder of the school year and not to have her health insurance lapse. And we negotiated a side letter that would allow employees to donate a day for her. And although we only need 30, we received over 90 days. So I think that just is indication of the type of place this school is, and we wish her well. So with that, I'm asking you to consider A through double I, please.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Motion to approve personal action items, A through double I.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Yes, welcome back.
Mr. Carlin, I think we are on to you.
We'll start with the financial report for the current year, at least through April. Projection for year-end surplus has grown to almost $2 million, based almost entirely on revenues. We continue to see expenditures forecasted near break-even, but we invariably pick up some more surplus as we close out the year, as smaller budget balances are closed out. Non-resident tuitions, special ed tuition, interest, income, and health services billings will be favorable this year. This surplus sets us up nicely for the half-million-dollar appropriation from unassigned fund balance that we had to offset the 2026, 2027 tax levy, the budget that went before the voters in May, and to keep us in a strong position regarding our reserves going forward. I would anticipate that we can significantly fund the capital reserve in anticipation of upcoming field replacement. in anticipation of upcoming field replacement within the next five years, after using the bulk of that reserve to fund our upcoming D-Wing project that was also just approved in May. So it's, it's, it's going to give us a little kickstart on replenishing that capital reserve.
Great news, Dan. Thank you.
The audit committee met last, on May 29th and reviewed the attached risk assessment update with representatives of Cherry Beckart, who is our internal auditor. It was the consensus of the audit committee to recommend that the Board of Education accept the risk assessment update and authorize the audit plan with debt, investments and cash as the focus area for the internal audit for the 2024-25 school year.
Okay. I think we'll hear a little more about that later during committee reports. I get a motion to approve the risk assessment internal audit plan.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Dan. You got action items?
Sure. As is customary in this meeting and then the reorganization meeting in July and then the first September meeting, there's a number of financial action items as we prepare for the next fiscal year. They include some contracted services, which we tend to renew on an annual basis. Some have been competitively bid and some are considered professional services, which are not subject to competitive bidding requirements. I'll start with, first item is two additional foundation grants. An increase in the size of the curriculum redesign in the Age of AI grant of $27,417, which more than doubles the size of the original grant to $51,942. And that's, that's based on interest from the faculty, which is, you know, it's, it's really grassroots effort to kick, kick, kickstart this, this AI project. And then the second one is funding for a plaque dedicating the Special Education Community Garden to our own Dr. Rachel Kelly, honoring her 30 years of service to the Bronxville School. So if I could have that one first. I'll take the next four together.
Okay. I get a motion to approve the foundation grants. I think it should also be noted, and I see it here in the small print, Dan. The Bronxville School Foundation has provided the school with nearly $400,000 in funding this academic year.
Amazing.
Just tremendous. Gratitude could not be expressed. May I have a motion to accept these two grants?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Dan?
The next four items, B, C, D and E, are all kind of annual items. We finally have a contract for our substitute, our new substitute and field trip nursing services provided by Cynthia Bothwell, ready for approval. There's been some legal back and forth regarding insurance requirements, et cetera. But, you know, she's already been on trips and has done a fantastic job. So, you know, we hope to use her going forward as well. CRP sanitation, we're hoping to renew our contract with them with a 2% increase. They were the sole bidder two years ago. Their service is excellent. And I think every time we bid, this particular service has only been one bidder. So, you know, they're, they're doing a good job, so we want to stick with them. D authorizes me to bind our liability commercial umbrella crime and cyber insurance policies for the coming year at an amount not to exceed $251,239. That was, that package was reviewed by the finance committee at their meeting last week. And our contract with A&amp;A Maintenance, the base amount of $1,4699. This package was competitively bid three years ago for renewal, for a five-year renewal period, if we so desired. And we, we like the service they're providing us. Any increases are based on changes in the prevailing wage, which we pay. And Mike Lee also did a little research with another vendor, which came in about $40,000, $50,000 higher. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions. And if not, I'd like to take the B, C, D and E together.
I get a motion to approve these financial action items, B, C, D and E?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item was reviewed also by the audit committee. Our new treasurer, Albert Corvino, has been working diligently to get ready for our independent audit. And he's recommending closing a number of old capital projects and redistributing the remaining balances as appropriate, which will serve to streamline our project length schedule in our financial statements and also result in a $400,000-plus return to the general fund and a $38,000 return to the debt service fund. Once those projects are closed, the funding goes back to where it originated from, which is good news. It will also help our surplus a little bit. Some of these projects are very recent and some are, I think the oldest was about 10 years old. So it's, it's good to get these out of our financial statements and close them down for good. Let's see. And then G was also reviewed by the audit committee, or the finance committee, excuse me. This is our year-end transfer authorization for any unallocated surplus to appropriate reserves to keep us at or under the 4% unreserved fund balance limit. I would expect a bulk to go to the capital reserve. These, these limits are intentionally high, just to preserve flexibility. So I guess, yeah, let's take F and G together if there's no questions.
Can I ask a question? Well, first of all, on the, on the reserves, which we reviewed in finance committee, these are estimates at this time and we'll have an opportunity to finalize them based on the year closing out in the fall, correct?
Yes. When I, when I get estimates from the auditors, we'll probably do that with the finance committee through email over the summer.
Okay. And on this memo that details the capital projects that we're closing out, which is very helpful, the flood mitigation project where we were authorized for a $900,000 project and it cost us 861, good, good news, we were under budget. But did we issue $900,000 in bonds for that?
Yes. Yes.
And so we've paid the bonds off?
Yep.
Help me just work through that.
We, the bonds will be paid off in 2017, I believe.
They were paid off in 2017?
No, I mean 2027. 27. I believe it was a 10-year bond issue.
Okay.
It was part of, I think it went together with the Auditorium and Science Labs around the same time. Either that or Hayes Field, I'm not sure. But once, that's why that goes back to debt service, because it was completely funded by bonds?
Right. Okay. Could you, it would be helpful just to have the dates that these projects were completed. Doesn't need to be now for us to vote on these items, but I'd be interested to know.
I have it in front of me. I'll circulate that.
Other questions on G or H? I'm sorry. That's F and G. Sorry. We're not at H yet. Get a motion to approve items F and G?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
H is in agreement with our former treasurer, Kathleen Lynch, who was treasurer here from 2009 to 2019, to help our new treasurer as needed over the next year to ensure a smooth and efficient transition. And that's as needed through the year, through the ebb and flow of his first fiscal year. I mean, the first three months have been outstanding. So we want to make sure he makes it through at least a year with a mentor. And that would be as needed hourly, not to exceed, I think it was about 93 hours for 10,000, or 100 and something hours not to exceed $10,000.
Okay. Do you want to take it together with I?
And I, setting our non-resident tuition rate for next year. The rate is intended to be linked to the Seneca Falls formula developed by SED. However, in the last few years, especially since COVID, the rate has been increased by the tax levy rate. And our rate has risen to be a little higher than the formula, about 10% higher. So I'm proposing that we keep the rate flat to help realign it over this year and possibly future years. Take it year by year. And the BTA rate continues at 5,000 per year as a result of the BTA contractual agreement.
Okay. Any questions?
Dan, how much flexibility do we have with the out of, out of district tuition rate?
Not a lot. We're higher than we should be at the moment.
Do we have the ability to move it up at all?
We should be moving it back. We, we've been higher than the formula in the last few years and nobody's come knocking on our door. But that could happen.
The Seneca Falls formula that you're referring to? So it could be retroactively looked at and we could be, we could have gone out of compliance? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
So I want to get that back over the next few years.
Okay. And who, and who regulates that? Is there a compliance?
State Education Department.
Okay. Got it.
I think you and I are thinking about the same thing, which is can non, can, can students who are tuitioning in pay a little bit more, which gives us flexibility on other areas perhaps? BTA, bringing down teacher, what teachers pay, something like that.
I would say no. In order to do that, we would have to come up with a, 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 kind of a cost analysis of why that is. And then, and there are certain exclusions in the Seneca Falls formula, which is transportation's excluded, special ed is included, excluded, athletics are excluded. You know, it's, it's kind of a base formula for the cost of a student. You know, our per pupil cost, if you had to just take our $55 million budget and divide it by our 1,580 kids is over $30,000, right? You know, and the, some kids are more expensive than others, just based on the services we offer them, which is why the SED formula is intended to become a base formula. And we'd have to come up with a rationale that could be defended to, to make it any higher than that.
And saying that it technically, I mean, 30,000 per kid is what it costs if you break it down by the number of students in the budget?
Yeah, that's not good enough.
They're not going to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Last question.
Sure.
When was the last time we decided to, in some way, direct questions around the Seneca Falls calculation?
Probably about 10 years ago.
Right. And we created a dossier that we submitted and demonstrated that we should be bringing tuition up a little bit higher than?
No, no, no. We've never, we've never, we've never applied to SED to exceed the formula.
I see.
It just, it, it just, over the last few years, just using the tax levy as an indicator, our tax levy rose higher than the formula did.
Got it.
Which is an indicator of what costs are in the village?
It's an indicator of costs outside of the formula increasing at a higher rate than our base educational cost.
Because what, what did we say? The average tax increase in the village this year is 4%?
Exactly six.
Six, 6%.
Right.
So if we're, if we're flat this year, we're, we're making up for 6% of what we were over.
Yep.
Is this worth taking offline and taking, and taking another look at it? Is it possible? Are we running out of time?
We don't really, uh, no, we can, we can address it at the reorg meeting.
Okay.
I think it's a good project.
I think so too.
For the finance committee also, take a deeper dive.
Yeah.
But would it ever be higher than 30, which is the average, the full cost?
Seems pretty rational to me. I think if we're talking about per pupil cost, shouldn't it be what we charge? On average? I mean, if we're paying $32,000 per student.
I thought you said it was 30.
If you're asking me if I agree with you, my answer is yes. If you're asking me if SED agrees with you, the State Education Department, they do not.
Right. Right. I'd love to look into our degree rate of.
Sure.
And we can also consult with legal counsel. They might have more information about, you know, if there's an appeal process in place or, you know, how we could attempt to address this.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Any other questions?
We need H if we're tabling I.
Tabling I?
We are.
Tabling I, so I am asked for a motion to approve H, financial action item H. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. And Dan, we're right back to you on facilities.
Yes. Work on the security vestibule will start after hours on June 25th. The general contractor will begin prepping and removal for the abatement in the middle school office and classroom A203. The pond field entrance will be officially closed to the public beginning on Friday, June 27th at 3:30 PM. And then abatement prep will begin in earnest on Friday, June 27th after 3:30 PM as well. Arrangements has been made to the, with the middle school staff to relocate for the final few days of school. The pump enclosure essentially has started. The general contractor and steel contractor have met on-site for preliminary layout. Electrician has all approvals from ConEd and has been on-site already for the meter relocation. And we're expecting them to continue this week as, you know, working on the electrical condition in the, in the pump, the current pump setup to relocate the meter can be done while school's in session. We have an action item, and that's awarding the RFP for special testing services to special testing laboratories at the prices and rates indicated, not to exceed a total of $20,000. And we see, we've received competitive pricing on that.
Okay. I get a motion to approve this action item for RFP.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Dan. Still you.
We have one other action item?
Yep.
The RIC-1 resolution. Brad, tell me if I'm getting this right, which is authorizing RIC-1 to enter data privacy agreements as part of our technology relationship with Southern Westchester Regional Information Center.
It's okay, Brad?
They're streamlining data privacy agreements for organizations throughout the state.
Okay. I get a motion to approve this action item?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think we're moving away from you, Dan.
Thank you.
Goodness. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
So we have three policies for our first reading this evening. These are all newly required policies. The policy subcommittee of the board has had an opportunity to look. has had an opportunity to look at them. Again, this is a first reading. We will have an opportunity to make any changes prior to the second reading at the reorganization meeting on July 8th. The first is the extreme heat condition days. Basically, this is now law that they want us to make every effort when classrooms get to 82 degrees to take some measures like turning off overhead lights, pulling down shades or blinds, turning on any fans, opening classroom doors and windows to increase airflow and circulation. And then if it does reach 88 degrees inside, they are asking us to consider removing students from those areas to other areas or maybe in extreme conditions, doing an early dismissal. We're very fortunate, the vast majority of our spaces are air-conditioned. If there does become a situation where we are getting close to 88 degrees, we can certainly relocate students from the few spaces that currently exist that don't have AC. Any questions on that one? The next one is a good indication how Bronxville is ahead of the curve. It's now a requirement that school districts have ex officio student members. So this allowed us to kind of put some of our practice in writing. There weren't many changes to how we are currently handling this, except that we are now naming that the SFL president will be an ex officio student member and that the high school principal, Dr. Ray Liverso, has the authority to appoint alternates that are SFL members. Any questions on that? And then the last one. As many of us are aware, student and personal electronic devices in New York State public schools is now subject to the law. The governor had put this law in place as part of her budget proposal. And we have spent considerable time soliciting feedback from students and parents and faculty members. I appreciate Dr. Liverso's time and energy on this. I am pleased to say that the practice that we put in place in both the elementary and middle schools this year meet the requirements of the law. And just a quick recap, in elementary, no devices that have internet access are allowed in school. If they want to bring a device that does not have internet access, it must stay in their locker throughout the day. In middle school this year, we introduced locked cabinets outside of each advisory. So every morning when they go to homeroom, they're required to put their devices in that locked box. We did feel strongly, given our open campus, that if students were leaving campus for lunch, they would have access to their phones. And then after lunch, they return them to the lock boxes. I give Mr. McCora and Mr. Vaglica a lot of credit for just making this change seamless in the middle school. And I give our middle school kids a lot of credit because they've really been overall very compliant. The biggest change is really to the high school. And after a lot of consideration, Ray and I have spent a fair amount of time on this, we believe that we are making a recommendation to the board that is teaching our kids how to be responsible, which is, I know, one of our main goals, and also adhering to the law. And so what we're proposing is that we don't see cell phones at all. Cell phones have to be off and away. We will have parking devices in each of the classrooms where they can put their cell phones. The cell phones can also be in their backpacks. We cannot see them. What's a big change for our high schoolers is that the law is clear that now it's even in hallways, cafeterias, study hall, learning commons. Anytime during the day, the phones need to be off and away. What's, what did you come up with, Ray? That you're going to use with the kids? Come on.
Off and away is okay.
Off and away is okay.
That's right.
Saying teaser.
That's right.
The high school students are going to love that.
Right.
I texted that with them on Friday.
Okay.
How'd that go?
They didn't want to question you.
Appealing. So what we are recommending in terms of personal laptops is that all of our ninth graders next year will continue with Chromebooks. These are our current middle schoolers who are used to bringing Chromebooks, district-issued Chromebooks, to and from school. So we're going to continue that with the middle school cohort moving up into ninth grade. However, with our 10th, 11th, and 12th graders, they can bring their personal laptops to school, providing that they are being used for educational purposes. So when they are in the classroom and it's appropriate to have them out, they can use their personal laptops. What will be important is that their cell phones are off and away. We do not want them using their cell phones as personal hotspots because then that will give them access to potentially distracting material during instructional time. So they will have access to their personal laptops again. And we are expecting our students to be responsible and compliant with this. And Dr. Liverso, Mr. Vaglica, working on some verbiage. So it's also clear not only what our expectation is, but also what the repercussions are in terms of warnings and then some discipline. So we feel good about where we've landed with this. And so that's part of the first reading this evening. Ray, did you want to add anything?
They would have to register their device that they're using it in accordance with our acceptable use policy.
Okay.
So it sort of allows us to accomplish two goals at the same time. One, reviewing the acceptable use policy and signing it. And two, putting that in there so that they, you know, they know that this is a privilege that can be revoked at any time if they're not using their personal device in accordance with our policy.
Okay. Now, look, this is it's going to be ambitious in terms of the cultural shift within the school. I think it's going to be great for the students. So thank you for this work. And we are approving this for the first reading, which means that we invite community comment on any of these policies. So please, if you have comments, please let us know. I get the board to approve these three policies for first reading.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We did the Rick. Okay. I think we are on to committee reports. I think, you know, why don't we knock the, before we go to curriculum with Ann Meyer, why don't we try audit finance, health and welfare? Why don't we just take them as they come? And then we could jump over to Ann.
Sure.
Pete? Yeah.
So we met with our internal auditors, and we saw a drastic improvement in certain areas year over year. We were deficient last year in five categories. Information technology, we went from a 225 risk rating, which is high risk, down to a 204. Our information technology was part of our internal audit last year. So it makes sense that it went down. Other things that were notable, student services was 244, which is a higher risk, went down to a 148, which is a medium rating. So we're happy about that. And the third area, purchasing and AP, we're at a 209, and that went down to 167. The three areas that are still high-risk areas are just the areas that you think should be high-risk. You know, anything dealing with money in or out should be, have a higher rating. And we're still going to work on that. Investment debt and cash is a 221 rating. Revenue and AR is a 219 rating. Government and grants, aid and grants, is a 212. The auditor recommended next year that the specific area they should look at is investment debt and cash, which is our highest risk rating this year, which kind of makes sense.
And I'll just add, Pete, that a lot of these ratings are not specific to the Bronxville school. They're based on looking at exogenous factors like what's happening in the broader economy and what's happening in other schools. So for example, if cybersecurity shoots up one year, it's because of what's happening in the broader climate around cybersecurity risk. So some of this stuff is, you know, stuff that we have to deal with as a school too. But a lot of it is risk that's placed on us based on what's happening outside the school.
Great.
And most of, and our high-risk are similar to other districts?
Yeah, no, it's good context. Thank you, both of you. Finance or?
Finance, we reviewed the insurance renewal package, which all but one policy are actual quotes. Our premiums are up 11% on average, which I think most of us know from personal experience. It's just what is happening in the insurance industry these days. And we also reviewed, as I referred to earlier, estimates for year-end transfers, which will be finalized once the annual audit is complete in the fall. And then lastly, we, the committee reviewed policies related to the finance area, most of which had no changes. We review them on an annual basis. I think one big update was that the district is going to add a district credit card so that where large deposits are required for trips, we will no longer be asking individual people to front those. The credit, use of the credit card will be very carefully controlled. And I believe only Mr. Carlin will have the ability to use it. So that's it for finance.
Good developments. Thank you, Susan. How about health and welfare, Eddie?
Health and safety?
Health and safety, sorry.
Yeah, we met. There wasn't, there wasn't a whole lot of big announcements coming out of this meeting. We've done our drills for the year. The head lice population is at a manageable level at this point. Sorry, everyone.
Excellent.
So everything's good on that front. What else do we have? Facilities, we're going to have to change the order of these these committee reports because Dan always takes all the exciting facilities. As he mentioned, we're getting the flood pump enclosure underway. You know, already underway. But it'll ramp up as soon as school is out. Same thing with the security vestibule. And the Bronxville School Foundation closing up their year. They had a really successful year. They did a lot for the school, as they always do. We're extremely grateful for them and everything that they can provide in terms of extra programming, things that the school budget wouldn't otherwise be able to afford. The new benches that are out front are just one example. And they're going to be putting an AC in the cardio and the weight room, which is great. That'll start pretty much after school is out as well. And I think that's all I have to say.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Eddie. Pete, anything PTA or?
No, just, you know, on Election Day, that whole open mic, you and I were together.
Yeah.
And your daughter was singing. But I didn't have a child singing, thank God. He was there. But, you know, the arts committee was there from the PTA, the whole Bronco that's made out of flowers. I'm like, what is, what a great day.
Yeah, it was tremendous.
Besides you and I winning.
Of course.
No, but I'm saying like, the whole atmosphere was just amazing. So Alana, thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Alana, you're welcome. Thank you.
And Memorial Day was amazing, though. So thank you for that as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Memorial Day, phenomenal week of events. So thank you.
Perfect. All right. Main event for the committee reports. Ann Meyer, our head of curriculum and instruction, if you could give us an update on the work that we've done there.
Sure. So our most recent meeting, we invited the high school English department, who piloted a new process for text selection that we developed this year. So essentially, with the middle and high school English department, we reviewed a variety of criteria that we want to make sure that when we're adopting a text for an English course, that we are looking at and evaluating before we move forward with the text. So that criteria includes things like the purpose of the title, alignment with the curriculum, scholarship and literary merit of the title, authoritativeness, accuracy and validity of the information, if it's nonfiction, perspective, timeliness or permanence, reputation of author or publisher. There are a variety that have questions that we ask the department to consider within the criteria. And it turned out that the English department was thinking about replacing a text in the 10th grade. So they were able to pilot this process this year. And the process in terms of how that criteria is considered is we've outlined that when the department is considering introducing a new text, they actually generate three possibilities for what might replace the text. And that they evaluate all three on this criteria. And that at least two department members review each text. And that the department comes together and has a conversation about the merits of each text in relation to the criteria and how it fits in the curriculum before decisions made about which text they'd like to put forth to the principal and I, and then eventually to the strategies and curriculum committee. I think we have the opportunity to hear from the department how this process worked. And I think what was really, first of all, I want to thank them for their openness to try something new and for all the work that went into this, particularly during the school year, to propose three different books and then evaluate them. And they did so in a very detailed and thoughtful way. I think what they shared with us was how helpful it was to have this process in place because had they not, they had an initial book they were thinking about. And they said in the past, they probably would have just gone with that book. But because they really had to think about a few options, they actually had a very productive discussion as a department, thinking more broadly across ninth through 12th grade, what texts might add to the curriculum. And they actually ended up deciding on a different text than what they originally thought. And then moving the text they originally thought they would go with to a summer reading text that they're going to assign to the whole grade. So I think they really commented on how this process was helpful to them. And I think, again, I want to thank them for all the work that went into it. And I think we ended up with a really nice outline going forward. So that was, I think, the main part of what happened at the meeting.
Right. And I would hope, thank you, Ann. And thank you to the English department and teachers for all the work they did. I have to say, what Ann Meyer's just described doesn't even do justice to the experience that the strategy and curriculum committee had when we sat there in front of these teachers explaining what they went through and how excited they were to work together to make this whole academic experience in English literature even more robust. It was like an exercise in critical thinking, but at a high, at the teacher level. It was really fascinating to us and I think really rewarding. And I just felt really good about this. We really didn't know where this was going. All right? And certainly, it started with one book. And then it evolved. But you could see how the wheels were turning in the room. I hope at some point, possibly in the fall, as we get further along, that we'll have a presentation so we could really lay it out. Because the things that they shared with us in the materials was really interesting. So it was very analytical and not just anecdotal discussions, but really impressive work. Thank you for your leadership. And to Dr. Kelly for helping make this happen.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Can I ask a question, Ann? Will there be any follow-up after a year of teaching this book? That it was all that they thought it was as far as student engagement and the themes that they were trying to get across? Is there going to be? themes that they were trying to get across? Is there going to be some sort of?
Definitely. I mean, they go through sort of a, a review of their curriculum each year, but especially new texts.
Great. Christina, I, I don't know if you want to add anything, she was also in the meeting?
Yeah, no, thanks. I, I mean, I think I'll just echo what Ann and Michael said. It was a really tremendous experience to see the teachers formulate this process and go through it, and really the, you know, the animating principle behind all of it was how to optimize the, you know, the students' use of their instructional time and to sort of provide a space and a time for the teachers to be able to engage in this kind of collaborative critical thinking, and, um, it feels like we really did see an outcome where the book selections went from, you know, very good to optimal, which is a win-win. So again, just to thank Ann for her leadership and the teachers for, for being willing to, to really put their thinking cap on and go through this. So we're very pleased and thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other comments? All right. I think we're on to public comment?
Nothing.
Anything? Nothing online? Nothing in the room? I think we have one person from the public here. Who's not administrator? You're okay. All right. Well, then, uh, may I have a motion to, uh, close the public meeting?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's it. Thank you for coming.